Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and-
Good evening again. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the Select Board, respective town staff, those in attendance this evening, and good evening to those of you watching at home on TV. And welcome to the October 11th, 2022 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. The Board just returned from a brief non-public session, so we'll jump right into our meeting. But first, I'd like to introduce the Board. To my right, Select Woman Lavi Roundtree Olaf. Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And Select Woman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And over at the table, our Town Manager, Russ Dean. Good evening.
Good evening.
And Joanna Bartel is going to record the minutes, I believe, from the video.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And my name is Nico Papakostandis. Let's start first. We have a bid award for an ambulance. We have Fire Chief Eric Wilking with us this evening. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board. So yes, I sent a memo to Town Manager Russ Dean. I know it's in the packet. We got a kind of late start reviewing the bids due to a snafu. One of the bids had been delivered on time but wasn't present for the Board. You recall, we had a two-week wait, and then we got that third, that fourth bid in. So we did take our time to review all the bids. I am recommending we purchase a Wheel Coach ambulance from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles. Quick note about the process. We created an RFP, sent an RFP out with both the U.S. Postal Service and email to four dealers representing eight manufacturers. We got four bids back. The lowest bid was out of Maine Pro Vehicle Corp. for $259,654. Greenwood's was the second lowest bid at $283,946. We had a Sugarloaf ambulance bid at $284,685. And Bulldog Fire Apparatus for an Osage ambulance was $306,674. We chose the Wheel Coach with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles after a long discussion at the firehouse for two primary reasons. One, it's an ambulance that's large enough that has a great reputation to service us as the Fire Department and the town well. The second, and perhaps more important reason, was the company Greenwood Emergency Vehicles is the same one we're buying our fire apparatus from. In fact, the engine we have under contract today will be built by Emergency One out of Ocala, Florida, and sold through Greenwood. So we have a great relationship with them. I can't speak highly enough of Sugarloaf Ambulance and the PL Custom ambulances that we've had in the past. So it was a tough choice, but given those two, we decided to take the lowest bid of those two. And the price you see that I just quoted for the record was that after trade and after pre-payment discounts. Greenwood Emergency Vehicles is offering a $6,000 discount if we finance and prepay before delivery, kind of locking them in and us into a contract so we can take advantage of that number as well. For the record, we do have an AEV ambulance. It is the one that we will be trading in. We tried them. They were at that time eight years-ish ago. They too were low bid. We found the ambulance too small in time, and the maintenance of the ambulance was more costly than most, so we chose, we reviewed them, but we chose to move in a different direction. I won't go on it nauseam. I know we have a long meeting, but again, Greenwood's is a tried and true company for us. We feel at this time, with many companies having problems with delivery, that Greenwood Emergency Vehicles and our longstanding relationship with them, they were able to take a spot in production, that they have an ambulance that they tend to build on speculation. They throw a few in. They're pulling their ambulance out. They're dropping our ambulance into that production spot, which allows the Town of Exeter to receive an ambulance within the next 15 to 18 months. If I was a betting chief, I'd say 18 months. Everybody likes that low number, but 18 months, given all the rest, 24 months and longer, it's still six months sooner than everybody else. So for those reasons, I would ask the Board's support just to move forward and sign a contract, work with the Finance Director on financing for the Wheel Coach ambulance at a, let's say, final delivered cost of $283,946.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the Board? Comments? Okay. Chief, I think your recommendation is solid, given all of the circumstances you laid out in your memo. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of Chief Wilking to purchase the Greenwood emergency vehicle for Wheel Coach ambulance for the final price of $283,945.76, and authorize the Town Manager to sign any appropriate agreements.
So moved.
Second.
So motion, second, and discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Chief.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now open the meeting up to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come before the Select Board with any comment. We do ask that if your comments are relative to any of the discussion items on the agenda, you wait until that time. But if not, we would ask public to come up for comment now. And seeing no public comment, we will move on. We have one proclamation, Madam Clerk. Do you want to read it, or do you want me to read it?
I will read it.
Okay.
I will refer to you.
Okay. Fair enough.
It's your signature that's going to go on it. This is for Community Media Day Resolution, October 20th, 2022. Whereas the sharing of ideas and information helps to build common understanding and common values and is critical for the healthy functioning of a diverse community; and whereas community media organizations provide people with the skills, equipment, and facilities necessary for the creation and sharing of stories, knowledge, and ideas through media; and whereas community media is an important resource for participating in local democratic policy and processes and keeps local government transparent and accessible; and whereas people will benefit from an increased awareness of the diverse and valuable programming on public education and government access channels or digital platforms; and whereas Exeter TV plays a vital role in the building our communities by encouraging conversations about our common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering an understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives. Now therefore, I, Select Board Chair of the Town of Exeter, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2022 as Community Media Day within the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire. All people are hereby called upon to promote the importance of community media, the availability of the public access channel to be used by the public, and programming available on Exeter TV's broadcast channels 13, 22, and 98, as well as its many digital platforms. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Exeter to be affixed this 11th day of October of the year of our Lord, 2022.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so it is proclaimed. Next on the agenda is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from the Exeter Select Board September 26, 2022 meeting. I'd ask the Board first if there are any amendments or revisions. Okay. And then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of September 26, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, the second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening, however, we do have a resignation from Kathleen McDougal, who is one of the elected trustees of the Trust Fund. Kathleen's term expires in March 2023. According to her letter that's in the packet, due to different career path, she can no longer feels that she can give the commitment, and thus is resigning. It would then be up to the Board again to appoint somebody to complete Kathleen's term between now and March 2023. So I will announce that publicly, and if the Board knows of anybody, or we know of anybody that recommends for that third seat. With that, I would first thank Kathleen for her time that she devoted as a trustee. And I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Kathleen McDougal from the trustees of the Trust Fund.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, the second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And again, we thank Kathleen. Okay, our first discussion item this evening, again, we have Fire Chief Eric Wilking with us to give a update on the state of affairs of the Fire Department. Good evening again, Chief.
Hey, welcome all. One quick note that I neglected to mention during the ambulance bid, and it might want to be woven into the record, is that the purchase will come from the ambulance revolving fund that was designed for that purpose, to purchase the ambulance. So it'll, the payments and the financing will be out of that fund, not the general taxation. So, and I apologize for missing that earlier. I'm pleased to be in front of you, presenting the Fire Department overall, how we are, how the shape, kind of operations. As we emerged from COVID in 2021, I think all of us in this room had hoped for what we consider a new normal, moving into 2022, only to find out that the new normal includes post-pandemic supply chain issues, delivery issues, inflation that no one, at least I'm aware of, you know, was prepared for at the rates that we have. Couple that with a number of personnel issues that the fire department has dealt with, and eight new hires, two of which we brought on ourselves by requesting additional hires, but six people either resigning to move on to other departments, or a well-deserved, you know, retirement, led us to really be working all year long on a hiring frenzy. Overall, I would characterize the Fire Department to be in good shape. Generally, equipment-wise, personnel-wise, morale-wise, we're in good shape. We have a good group of firefighters, led by some solid union officials. Yes, let's talk collective bargaining agreement. I think they saw movement from the town when we entered that agreement, that everyone is moving forward, and that leads to a great morale and esprit de corps as we move on. It's easier to be chief with people that are cheerful to come to work than it is trying to, you know, as they say, you know, the beatings will continue until morale improves. But we don't need to do that. So we've been filling vacancies all year long. I'd like to take a moment just to read into the record the new folks. We haven't brought them before you, like the Police Department did, but we hired firefighter AEMT William Page from Newmarket. He was a lateral transfer. He was a career firefighter there in Newmarket. Firefighter EMT Nicholas Colonna from Kingston. He was a call firefighter that wanted to go career. Firefighter paramedic Kylie Haas. She was a career firefighter paramedic in the town of Springfield, Vermont, had roots in the seacoast and had always wanted to come back, and this was a great opportunity for her. Firefighter AEMT Troy Wise, lives in Seabrook. Firefighter paramedic Cody Billado. Cody's a legacy, a second-generation firefighter. Some that have been in town a long time might remember his dad worked for us for years as a paramedic. Firefighter AEMT John LaBelle, lives down in Kensington with his family. Recent hire in the past week, firefighter paramedic Weston Bartlett, lives here in Exeter. And the newest hire that hasn't even come outboard, he starts October 17, thank you, is Chris Hamill. He and his wife live in Kensington with their family, and they're very much excited about a career opportunity as a career firefighter in Exeter. So we're blessed, and I'm happy to report that as of October 17, a week-ish from today, we will finally be full staffed, including those two new hires that were approved for July. It's taken a while to get there, but here we are. We're finally moving the ball forward. If I, if you were to ask me a year ago what the most stressful part of this job as Fire Chief was, I probably would not have said personnel and hiring. However, today, personnel and hiring has turned into one of the most time-consuming and stressful positions. And, you know, you think most anybody wants to be a firefighter or ride the big trucks, and it's just, we're having the same hiring problems that every other agency is, and it's amazing to see. It's stressful, but amazing to see. Shifting gears, let's talk supply chain. We have been hit with a number of issues throughout the firehouse in our line of work. We did order an engine quickly after the town meeting vote in March to get in the queue. We knew it was going to take some time, so we entered into an agreement with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, mentioned earlier tonight, to build an engine. We still anticipate today. I was just chatting with the sales staff and the manufacturer this afternoon. We're still looking at a July 2023 delivery, which wasn't bad. That's about, excuse me, 15 months for an engine, slightly over the past. Past performance was about a year to build these big trucks, but it'll be about 15. We're still hopeful that Ford Motor will be able to complete the build of an F-250 pickup truck. We have just received word within the week that we have a VIN number, and the build date is scheduled for the end of November. That doesn't mean we're going to take delivery of it, but they know it hits the assembly line in the end of November, so we're going to work with Finance and Town Manager Dean to see if we're going to need to encumber those funds, because we can't pull the trigger and pay for the unit, but we're hopeful it'll be delivered by December to make that work. The self-contained breathing apparatus that was approved at the town meeting vote to replace is still stuck in supply chain issues. In chatting with that vendor, they do believe that they can have them delivered by the end of November. This caused us headaches in the firehouse because the existing units, we had not budgeted to maintain service and test them. So just to kind of show you, working with a vendor, because they value us as a customer, they're going to come in, service, and test all of our existing units at no charge to the Town of Exeter, because they know that we had anticipated delivery of the new units. So they're going to, if, as you will, they're going to eat that cost of labor and material. So they're going to keep our existing units in service until they can deliver new. We're hopeful it'll be by the end of November. We had sought through the ambulance revolving fund and the ambulance budget, a new vehicle extrication tool to replace one that was just about 25 years old. We finally took delivery of that unit. Again, we ordered it shortly after town meeting. It was delivered on September 29. So every part of this is just pushing it out. Chief Pizon came to you in May or early June and requested funds through a Gopher grant. It was really not a competitive grant. Each community was awarded $50,000 to use as they saw fit to purchase things COVID-related. We sought approval, and was granted approval to buy two automatic or stretcher loading systems. So these systems were recently installed last week in both ambulances. We feel we can clean this grant up by December within that performance period, and these are a huge help. Each power load in the back of the ambulance is rated to lift 800 pounds. I hate to tell everybody, but we are not getting any smaller as a society. The weight of the cot itself and the patient, although maybe not 800 pounds, is often quite heavy, and this takes the lift off the firefighters putting them in. It's all done automatically. So it's a safer system, less chance of dropping a patient, having somebody get hurt. So we're excited about that. All the shifts have been trained now, and we've received delivery of that. And as we mentioned, the RFP for the ambulance, we just discussed it earlier tonight. Equipment bullets. One of the bullets I put in here is just kind of a shameless plug, and I know everyone looks to a bid process, an RFP process, to get the best equipment for the best price to the taxpayers of the Town of Exeter, and I fully respect that. What we're finding today is a proven relationship with a vendor, that they will step up when we need them and we purchase from them, is proving to be far more beneficial than always looking low bid and bouncing around from one another. That example of Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, if we didn't have a relationship with Greenwood after buying three engines in a row, they likely would have not have stepped up and pulled one of their ambulances out, simply to say, "I'm sorry, Chief, it's going to take two years to build your ambulance." That's what every other dealer and distributor said. But they stepped up and said, "We understand. We value you as a customer." So even though we're always looking for the best deal, and we'll continue to do so, having that positive relationship truly helps. Right here in New Hampshire, buying turnout gear. Turnout gear for the firefighters, just a protective ensemble, is taking a year to build. There are so many units in the queue because of backlogs from everything from 3M making the reflective striping, to the manufacturer making the fire retardant material itself. We have a great relationship with Globe, built right here in New Hampshire, and a local distributor. Were able to get that gear in about six months. Still a long time, but it still cuts the time in half. So these are, these are the things that we've seen as a positive light in the firehouse. Budgeting. This has been an interesting budget year. We've already asked mid-season, mid-budget shortly after July 1st to do some line adjustments. We haven't needed to move salary money into the expense line or vice versa, but we did have to move monies within our expense line for other purchases. And one, most importantly here, is the turnout gear. With eight new hires this year, we budget typically six to seven sets of gear. The eight hires were very tall, very short, some larger, some smaller. We ended up having to buy new gear. We ended up having to budget 12 sets of gear when we typically buy six. And just what was in the memo, the cost for the gear in 2021 was $2,600 a set. Inflation and supply chain has driven it up to $3,200, almost a 25% increase. So the sheer volume of suits and the cost increase destroyed our protective equipment budget. So we sought Russ's approval and the Finance Director, he was new at the time. Were able to do some line transfers, and we're working through the budget. We're going to bring it in all right, but that's the kind of deals that we've been dealing with the firehouse. Most recently, we've had all our apparatus tested. The pumps are tested, the hose are tested, the aerial was tested. One of the engines, our 2010 Emergency One engine, it's mid-life cycle. We would not plan on replacing that engine, or still don't, until 2030. That engine had significant diesel engine work. The engine, we believed, was blown. Mahoney Brothers on Route 125 was kind enough to kind of look at it, look under the hood, if you will, and they determined that it didn't seem as bad as originally sought. We did lose the turbo. The turbo on top of that diesel engine itself was over $12,000. The entire repair to get that truck back in service, and it is back in service today, was a total of $16,000. We were able to fit that into our vehicle maintenance budget creatively. I can't speak highly enough. Harry Lindsay and this crew over at the Public Works Garage, they do yeoman work under tremendous conditions, trying to push stuff out, but Harry worked well with us, and we were able to fit that engine repair in and keep that truck on the road. Our desire is to allow that truck to live out its life cycle and hit that 20-year mark. We'll come back and we'll discuss replacing it at the right time. As stated here, the balance of the fleet is in service. The latter is currently down in Massachusetts with an electrical system issue. It's got a little gremlin that likes to shut the rear lights off, and then shut the front lights off. So they're searching through an electrical problem in the truck now, but it isn't mechanical. It'll be back in service soon. Quick thing on statistics. If you know I'm a numbers kind of guy, this is Nico, and my favorite time of year, Christmas. Here we go, we're in the budgets. Our call volume on the fireside is down about 300 calls. And when looking at it and really digesting it, we can attribute the vast majority of those 300 calls to the decommissioning of the fire alarm system. We're getting far fewer false alarms. I'll call them line-based false alarms. When we had hard wires in the poles, we would be going to stray bells and boxes ringing in due to weather events, wind events, and whatnot regularly. And those, obviously, we don't maintain the system. We don't hear those bells anymore. There's nothing there. That coupled with service calls to go along with it have dropped our run volume on the fireside down appreciably. However, our aging population has turned it right around and has risen, and our EMS calls have risen by over 200 calls. And more importantly for us as a town, from a budgeting standpoint, is of those 200 more EMS calls, just to the three-quarter year mark, the third quarter, we've had 250 more transports. The transports translate into revenue. That's when we talk about billing the insurance companies and whatnot, Medicare, Medicaid, all of those coverages. So 250 more transports in just nine months is real changes to the ambulance revolving fund. So it's still catching up. Our vendor, ComStar, is billing and being playing catch-up, but we will see this at the end of the year in a different revenue stream, a positive revenue stream. Jason Fritz, excuse me, the Deputy of Fire Prevention, is out doing inspections. He's at about 400 inspections. Last year, by this time, we had done about 460, but last year was a COVID catch-up year. We had delayed or postponed a lot of inspections due to COVID, just so we weren't in the buildings, subjecting them to us and we to them. But in this year, it's a typical year, at 400. Revenue? Fire is pretty consistent. When we lost, that's a shame. When we decided to no longer support and maintain the fire alarm system and the monitoring fees were that, we greatly dropped our revenue. We knew that was going to be a trade-off. We were trading $40,000 to $60,000 between overtime and cost to maintain the fire alarm system. We traded that money for the not receiving $30,000, $35,000 in monitoring fees. You could see it was a loss as it was. So the fire permitting, what we do, is at 1,400 instead of 15. I'll let James discuss the Health Department and his revenue. And you see ambulance revenue starting to creep up now. We've surpassed last year, and like I mentioned earlier, I think we can, we will forecast that'll do even better. Emergency management? My job as Emergency Management Director, I seek every dollar I can to kind of get it back to the Town of Exeter recently. We kind of did a look back, and we captured a lot of costs late 2021 that had not yet been sought for reimbursement. And through August 31st of this year, those two numbers together are just shy $88,000. We have not received those funds yet, but both requests have been approved all the way through FEMA, so they'll work their way through the system, and the Town of Exeter should receive that $88,000. We received just shy of $24,000 from the state for our participation in the Seabrook Station planning process. Last year was a drill cycle year, so we had three exercises. That number's a little high. Next year is a non-exercise year, so July 1, we've already passed that date until June 30. There are no exercises planned, so this number will be just south of $10,000. It fluctuates due to drills. We've been, our award, excuse me, our EMPG grant for upgrades to the public safety complex was approved in the process. I don't know when Governor and Council meets or has met, but they didn't get back to me as of yesterday. Well, they were off yesterday. Today, as far as that grant, but we anticipate getting that approved, and we already mentioned the Gopher grant for 50. The last thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't stand here to either ask, you know, be able to answer questions, but we remain engaged weekly with LaValley-Brenzinger architects, Chipulon on the police side, Dave Sharples, who have been shepherding this project through, and other town leaders, obviously Russ and all, Budget Committee, Facilities Advisory Committee, and obviously you, the Select Board, through this process. We look forward to, you know, spirited conversation and engaging as many parties as we can. At the urging of many, we're working through what many would call frequently asked questions, you know, that we can kind of get in front of stuff, you know, "Hey, I heard you're going to hire a new firefighter." That's absolutely not true. You know, this kind of thing. We'll work through these issues. Idea popped up, you know, why don't we hold an open house? We love to open our doors to the firehouse, let people see who we are, what we are, let people kind of assess for themselves, or see for themselves what their public safety complex looks like and how it facilitates our response and/or hampers it. So we're going to chat through here in the near future before the weather gets terrible, what an open house would look like at the firehouse, and let them get to know all of us as well. That would be a combined police-fire thing if we made that one work. So I'll stop there and take a pause. So again, I would characterize the firehouse, the fire station, as good. We've had better years and perhaps worse, but we're in good shape, poised to move into 2023, and we'll see where we go.
Well, thank you for that very thorough report. I have a couple comments, but first I want to turn it over to the Board. Any thoughts, questions?
The only thing I have to say is the idea of the open house, I think, is a wonderful idea, and the sooner the better if you can, if it works out.
Sure.
Community engagement. Community engagement, I think is invaluable.
You incorporate like a haunted house.
I was thinking like cider and things, but I wasn't going to push you in public on that.
Cider doughnuts, there we go. Awesome, thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman?
No, thanks, very thorough report. It's well done, it's different from previous ones, I like the narrative. So, thank you.
I've been told I'm a good storyteller. I don't know yet if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but the jury's still out on that.
We'll go with a good thing.
Thank you so much.
Selectwoman Rountree, any comments?
No comments, but I would just offer a suggestion about the open house, because I, I agree, I think it's a really good idea. And I, I think one of the things that is really frustrating, oftentimes when we're working on bigger projects, is, you know, not, we think we're doing a really good job of communicating that this big opportunity is available. We think that we're communicating enough to have people know and then inevitably everybody's like, what are you talking about? I don't, why are we just hearing about this now? And so I think, you know, the more we can do to work with our different town committees, maybe the Communications Committee, or us, or, you know, some ways to sort of promote engagement. I do think the open house at the fire station is a really good idea to give people, you know, because it's one thing to like, look at plans and talk, you know, talk about how inadequate it is, but it's another thing to really see it. And so is there a way to like, do a TikTok? You know, like, how do we kind of communicate and find people and like, find people where they are? So I would love to be a more present thought partner as you're thinking about engaging people, because I'm really sick of, you know, why doesn't the town communicate? Because, you know, I think, I think we try to and I think, but I do think that we could do a much better and more thorough job.
Agreed.
Can I just follow up with what Molly said, the, the budget meeting a few weeks ago, it came up and there were a lot of things that we've talked about here.
Yeah.
And it's not getting out to people, so can't stress it enough, we have to find ways.
But you just hired all these young people, they're on social media and on TikTok, we can, we can.
I don't even know.
They are.
We can use this.
So, you know, I agree with, with both. Also, I have to plug the October 24th Select Board meeting, will be a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Budget Recommendations Committee. Much of that evening, we'll be discussing this and I know you and Chee Poolen and Mr. Sharples will be here and we'd love to have, I would love to have as many people in the NOVAC room on October 24th. If we could have just as many people as we had for a meeting in May, for Parks and Rec Initiative, I would be very happy. I'd also, you know, understanding we can't compromise public safety and the, and what you do indoors, but if we could work maybe with Exeter TV, I don't know if maybe doing a tour might not be appropriate to, to have on, on Channel 22, but maybe part of an open house that Bob could film, maybe interviewing key staff to talk up the project. The frequently asked questions is brilliant, I think that's a great idea. I mean, the more we can educate folks before they come to a meeting, I think the better off we are. So maybe if, Mr. Dean, if we could consider all these things with Mr. Glawacki?
Yes.
He's real good at putting things together quickly and he does a great job.
As our communications coordinator, he does a great job.
He does, he does. Again, thank you for this. I, I'm going to be interested to hear, I want you to come back and let, let us know how the lifts work.
Sure.
Because I, I'm really, really interested in how that's going to be effective and, and sort of take the ease off of your, your department.
Yeah, we're late to purchase. They're a big expense. As you can tell, 50,000 covered all but, I can't remember the number, six or 8,000 we asked out of the ambulance account. Many communities around us have used them with success over the years. We purchased a, a power cot, if you will, so.
Yeah.
A, an electric-driven cot that picks the patient up to the height to go in, but we still had to support them going in the ambulance. So there's still that ability for injury, but, but we're excited about seeing them as well, and the crews are, you know, remain, you know, super excited to see them. Again, it's one of those great relationships, town employee, you know, we're doing things for them.
Right.
To help them facilitate their job safer and better. And that's, kind of goes to that morale we spoke of, they see these positive changes. And although it didn't cost the town a great deal of money, the, the goodwill, if you will, is seen by all, so.
Well, I'll be interested, come back and tell us how they work. And I agree with you, I think, you know, obviously our job is to look after the taxpayer dollars, but I think, you know, moving forward at the state of things right now between inflation and also with supply and demand, they oftentimes looking at the bigger picture, not just the cost, if you've got a relationship. Obviously, you gave a great example of somebody who's going to come out and do some service free of charge because of the relationship that you and the department have built. I mean, I think while we look at the tax dollars, we also have to look at that, because in the end, I think it ends up saving and, and it keeps, it keeps the department safer, I think.
Sure, thank you.
And again, just lastly, thank you and the department. You've had a rough couple of years and, you know, you have kept, along with the Police Department and Mr. Murray, have helped keep this town safe and well through a pandemic, while performing the core function of a firefighter, a police, police officer. I mean, public safety is probably one of the biggest core functions folks can expect from their community and both you and Chief Poolen have done very well with your departments and I consider two of the best departments in the state, really, so thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. If you don't mind, I'd like to yield the balance of my time to Health Officer Murray and have him give a short report on health.
We would love to, we've missed Mr. Murray. We talked about that before we adjourned, before we opened the meeting, but you're such a good storyteller, Chief Wilken, that we've missed your presence. I mean, we've noticed you haven't been around, so.
I appreciate it.
Glad to have you back.
I got away for a little bit, but I promised to be back, it's cold weather now, so.
It's budget season, you'll be around.
And it is budget season.
Mr. Murray.
Dean, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As the chief said, as a part of the Fire Department, the Health Department also wanted to give an update on how we're doing. Unlike the Fire Department, being the sole employee of the Health Department, we've had no personnel issues and no hiring issues, so we're looking good there. This year has been a bit of a return to normal. Routine inspection services have resumed over the course of the summer into the fall. Several new food establishments have come into town and revenue is up this year over last year. There's been less homestead licenses issued this year over prior years, so that is something that we offer in town. Homestead kitchens are allowed under our town ordinances, so if anyone wants more information of that, they can reach out to me in my office. There are limitations on what can be made and what can't be made, but usually we do a pretty good job of working with individuals and, you know, finding what they can produce in their own homes to sell. We've had a couple new childcare facilities also open up in town this year, so I've been working with them to make sure they're in compliance with state health and safety guidelines. Regularly have been meeting with new potential business owners in town seeking to open new food establishments, so like I said, we have had some open. We've had more people interested in opening restaurants in town this year, especially over the past couple of years where it's been a little rough. We've seen more closures the past couple of years, but this year we've kind of bounced back. So hopefully we continue to see more restaurants and food establishments opening in town. Nuisance complaints have increased recently, so the most common nuisance complaint this year has been rats. They are common in the town, any town with a river running through it is going to have them. Any town with a river running through its downtown section where you have food establishments, it's going to be a big problem, so. Get a lot of complaints about rats moving into areas that there haven't been before. I'd just like to let people know that, you know, well-maintained yards, securing your trash, taking in bird feeders are ways to prevent rats from entering your, your premises and making sure you secure your house and, you know, fix up any little holes or stuff you have in your house is a good way to keep them out as well. Other nuisances reported this year have included water quality issues, minimum housing standards and noise complaints, and again, I work with individuals on those as well. Mosquitoes were fairly manageable this year. Dragon mosquito control provides our mosquito control services in town. They found no positive batches of their, what they, when they go out and catch the mosquitoes and send them to the state labs. There have been no positive batches for Triple E, West Nile, or Jamestown Canyon virus this year. There weren't many cities or towns in New Hampshire that did have positives. I know Manchester had some and a couple other towns, but really less than most years, I think because the drought conditions, mosquitoes weren't so bad, so we kind of lucked out there. COVID-19 update, as it stands, the state isn't updating their numbers as frequently as they used to. So the update I was able to look at today shows pretty much a flat line going through September, October. There haven't been many spikes in hospitalizations either, which is good news, but it is still here, it doesn't seem to be going anywhere and hopefully, you know, we don't have as bad of a winter as last year, but it's within the realm of possibility. So we just need to be aware of that and on top of that, it's flu season, so we have that as well. So we still recommend following the CDC guidelines on both COVID and the flu, and talking to your PCP or your doctor about vaccines or boosters as appropriate. Continue to wash hands regularly and stay home when you're sick. If you're experiencing or having COVID-19 flu or flu symptoms, get tested and talk to your doctor to see what treatments are available. Going into this winter, unlike last year, the year before, you know, we do have more tools in the chest at this point. We, we kind of have the answers to the test, so hopefully we can keep the numbers low and make it a good 2023 as well. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Murray? Nope, but thank you again, James, for.
Sorry, I have a question, and this is maybe, I'm just, I'm, I'm curious if there's chatter in the emergency management preparedness sector about like, tips and tricks to prepare for a, you know, the next pandemic or, you know, emergency management best practices and tools and things, things like, what are we learning coming out of COVID? And, and maybe this is a question to sort of marinate on and like, you know, think through how we can best support, you know, the people who are maybe housing and food insecure and, you know, how we can sort of shore up that we have access to treatment for, for folks who maybe fell through the cracks during, especially during this pandemic.
Sure. I, I can't speak to the emergency management side 100%. I could say that communication has definitely been a big lesson learned throughout the pandemic and coming down from the CDC, that has been a huge thing, that, you know, how and when we communicate pandemics, epidemics of any sort is vital. And there were a lot of lessons learned from that in the beginning when they were giving, you know, mask, mask recommendations, different things like that, different protocols that were coming out very early in the pandemic. And as the science developed, they had to change some of those recommendations. So that was a huge lesson learned as far as, you know, the CDC and we come to epidemics and pandemics, something to take away from COVID. I can tell you that they're still working on lessons learned and kind of the after-action report that goes with a lot of these things. There's a, a lot that they can draw from it. I can get back to you with more information on that as well, if you'd like.
Great.
Great. Thank you, James.
I do have one question. Not being on the board, I did try to follow it during the pandemic, of course, but the boosters, are we doing anything for town employees, like a clinic or anything like that, or is that not possible these days?
So during the height of the pandemic, we were given a vaccine refrigerator from the state and we were working with the state and the, the Seacoast Regional Public Health Department. We were working with them to get vaccines in-house and to provide them, both the town employees and, and the community itself. We no longer have the refrigeration, we no longer have the capabilities, and I think even the Regional Public Health Center has kind of backed off of that as well.
Okay.
A lot of it is through either private entities like local pharmacies or through your doctor at this point, so.
And thank you again for all the work you guys did through the pandemic and going to businesses and it was a feat and very impressive, so thank you.
Thank you.
Boosters are free. They are free. You can go to a pharmacy to get one.
Good.
You can sign up for appointments online through many, I know CVS is offering that, I know many others are as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, Mr. Sharples is back, our town planner with solar array update continuation from our discussion in the last meeting. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, Chair, Board. So I appeared before the board at the September 26th meeting, kind of went through a lengthy description of how we got to today with the solar array, which a warrant article passed in 2021, about 18 months ago, for $3.6 million and change to construct up to a 1.77 megawatt system at the solar array. I also explained the history in my prior memorandum, I'll just leave that for my prior memorandum, I did include it, I won't go over that again.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
But in my memorandum, I did explain that I would pursue two pathways. One was to negotiate, try to negotiate a contract for a smaller system for a price within our current bonding authority of the 3.62 million approximately, and potentially return to the Select Board with a contract for the system. And the second pathway was to explore a potential warrant article to bring back to the voters to construct a 1.77 megawatt system, which would fully utilize the, the landfill site. So over the last couple of weeks, I've been working diligently, almost every day or multiple times a day with Revision Energy and with Competitive Energy Solutions, who is our third party, who's acting as our agent in this, if you will, and they are, they help solar developers, you know, like the town in this instance, you know, look at what they're getting, so forth, do their own pro forma analysis. So, so both Revision and them have been invaluable in the last few weeks. So we did determine that the town should not move forward with a contract for a smaller system at this time, really due to a variety of concerns that include really the return on investment, the pro forma was very, very tight, interconnection costs very high, as you know, came back from Unitil about, you know, 600 over, you know, 600, over $640,000, and, and site prep, potential site preparation costs, because they're hearing things out of, you know, some potential DES requirements that are needed for these systems. Because as I explained before, New Hampshire doesn't have really, there's not a lot of these. Just found out the other day, some interesting facts, New Hampshire has 1.2% solar as part of their energy portfolio. Get 1.2%, where Mass is just hit 20%, Maine's 5%, and, and rapidly installing solar, you know, Vermont 17. So we're, we're kind of in the, the infancy of, of that, so we don't have a lot of rules or legislation around it, so there's some uncertainty in the process. So that just wasn't going to work, Revision couldn't really make it pencil either, a smaller system. So we were unable to, to commit to a contract for a smaller system, but I do not believe the project should be abandoned at this time, and we should continue to, you know, pursue a, a solar project at the landfill for, for several reasons. You know, as described in my prior memorandum, the interconnection, interconnection cost came in well above what Revision had carried, and during the time interconnection was completed, the price of labor and materials rose sharply, as we're hearing earlier, and I'm hearing a lot from other projects, you know, inflation, you know, supply chain issues, everything went up. However, as I mentioned before, the 30% investment tax credit in the Inflation Reduction Act passed in August, while it didn't make the smaller system attractive, because those interconnection costs and site prep don't really go, go down for the smaller system, they kind of stay the same, so it kind of hurts the numbers on the back end, so you get the economies of scale as you go bigger. The construction of the larger solar array is definitely worth further pursuit, in my opinion, and so, and our partners as well. So unless there's an objection, I would like to continue to work with Revision on refining the numbers for a larger 1.77 megawatt system and return to the Select Board with a proposed warrant article to bring before the voters in March. As part of their effort, Revision has agreed to immediately initiate the civil and engineering and permitting process to obtain firmer estimates of site prep costs from DES and interconnection costs from Unitil, including an additional study that I alluded to at the last time. They've already, I've seen emails back between Unitil and Revision trying to, you know, refine the further, potential for further study and possibly lowering those interconnection costs. And this will all give us a better idea what the total cost of the system potentially bring before the voters. While I'm not going to throw out numbers, the goal has been, and what, what the latest numbers are showing, that the system, the goal would be to potentially bring an article before the voters to recognize the increased cost of 1.77 megawatts, but hopefully that entire amount, or, or at least the majority of that, lion's share of that amount, will be offset with a 30% tax credit, so the numbers will be just as attractive. And another, which is pretty much bad news for everybody, but good news for the solar project, is that utility rates are going up again and they just had a rate increase, which is expected, but when that happens, which it's happened the last couple of years, it really makes the solar pro forma look a lot better because the net metering credits go up, you know, faster than the investment, you know, the cost of the solar array, so the, the pro forma just looks better. Not good for, you know, all of us paying for energy, but. And lastly, just want to thank Revision, they've. And lastly, just want to thank Revision. They've been a really good partner in this. They, they, you know, we signed a letter of intent with them, and they had an obligation to deliver us a system, a three, a 1.77 megawatt system for the original, you know, warrant article amount. They, they did not do that, but they did pay, you know, the interconnection study on, you know, they took that risk. And so they're, they're under no obligation to us, and we're under no obligation to them, because the letter of intent, they didn't perform. But they have been a very good partner to work with. They continue to put their time, energy, money into this. So I, I want to continue working with them, and hopefully we can, we can get a project out of this. So, you know, fingers crossed, and without your, without any objection, I'd like to continue. And, and I'll be back with, you know, hopefully be back with a proposed warrant article to install the larger system, because I believe that's the only way with the, with the recent price increases.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any members of the public wish to comment or ask any questions?
Good evening, Cliff, Senator. I'm a member of the Energy Committee. Renee Allen wasn't able to be here tonight. Neither was Lou, who was really the committee's liaison on the project. But we did, Dave came to the, our last meeting, gave a detailed explanation of what was going on, sort of hinted that this is sort of the direction that things were, were moving in. And, and I just wanted to report that the committee is very much on board with, with continuing with the project. We really think it's very important. Disappointing that it's taking longer than, than we had hoped, but doesn't change the importance of it and our support for it. And Amy is also, Amy Forman is also here from the committee, so if you have any questions. And I think Dave is coming tomorrow, maybe, to the committee meeting to, to give us a further update. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cliff and Amy. Any other members of the public? Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board. Any comments or questions?
I just want to thank you for continuing your diligence on this, and I, I think it's very important. And I completely support you continuing to do whatever you need to do to find a good path forward on this. I think it's very important.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. It is one of the, probably the most complex project I've ever, complicated projects I have ever dealt with.
I've worked with you enough to see that, because you blow from it. And I'm so glad to hear about Revision Energy, because it's a, it's a local, a local business. I've heard wonderful things about it.
Yeah.
And obviously-
They've been great. They've been great. We'll continue to work with them. We also have the protection, because our interests are a bit different, you know, because they are, you know, the, we're, we're a potential client of theirs. But with the third-party help that I have, I think it's a good, it's, it should be a good, we should be able to get a good relationship.
Thank you for all your work, continued work on this.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I echo what Selectwoman Belanger said, and I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Nothing, other than just reiterate what they've said.
And Selectwoman Mottrell. And I agree, Dave. I mean, no objection from the Board. You know, again, disappointing, but, but it's not devastating, and let's keep working. You've done a great job. Revision Energy's been a good partner, and I think that, I hope we'll get overwhelming support again at the polls in March. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, did you have anything to add? I forget you're over there. I'm sorry.
Just that Dave and I have had several conversations in my office about this project, and I wanted to echo the same thing. He's put a lot of effort and energy into this, and I thank him for all of his efforts on it. So hopefully we can bear some fruit on it.
We'll look forward to having you back soon, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have an ARPA update from Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy. Good evening, Melissa.
Good morning. Oh, my goodness. Good evening.
Well, we'll be soon enough.
Have a long day. How's everybody doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Good.
So we've come to you over the last year or so to discuss the town's allocation of ARPA funding, which was $1.6 million. Throughout that time, you guys have approved various projects up to this point totaling That leaves us with a balance of $736,374. Due to the regulations of ARPA, we have until 2024 to decide or commit to what the funds are going to be used for, and then we have through 2026 to actually spend the dollars. In previous meetings, you've seen various department heads come before you with different ideas, and it was decided that you'd really like to see the projects kind of an all-in-one chunk. So I don't have recommendations for tonight, because what I'd like to do with your permission is, is just have a little bit of a discussion about some of these projects, and what the ARPA dollars could do or, or fund, and in what way, sort of take a little bit of a temperature of the Board, and then also have a little bit of a discussion about how this could or couldn't affect the FY 2023 budget. So like you have seen in the packet, we have spent the $800,000, so now we have $736,000 left. We discussed this with various department heads who sort of nominated different projects or brought to us various projects that they thought might be good uses for the ARPA funding. You'll see in your packet, Town Hall HVAC, Town Office Second Floor Office Creation Project, which is sort of expanding the HR office, because we are short staff person's office here. Town Hall Chairs being replaced, Town Hall Sound and Lighting update. If we get further information on Swayze, and Swayze is in fact shut down and halfway through the park, we will, as a town, need to have a discussion as to how we go about doing that and how we do it safely. So that's an idea of using some money to facilitate a project if that gets closed. Eric proposed purchasing a new ambulance. You heard Chief Pullen recommending police department tasers. The land, for those of you that don't know, I know you for at home, the land that Planet Playground sits on is actually not owned by the town. It is leased by the town. And we are in the process of negotiating whether or not there would be an opportunity to purchase that property, so that's a potential funding use. The Town Hall Building, as you know, is very old, needs to be rekeyed. Some of the locks and stuff, although they are working, they're sort of on their last legs. You saw Town Clerk Andy Kohler come to you requesting the purchase of polling pads for the elections. We saw an intersection improvement presentation a few months back. That's another project that was brought to us by DPW. And then we have the newly purchased 10 Hampton Road, and there is a, there are obviously a few things that could be fixed up there. What I'd like to say is that all of these projects probably have a lot of really good merit to them, and we only have $736,000 left. It does not need to be spent immediately. Like I said, it has to be committed by 2024. Russ, myself, Corey, and Laura from the Finance Department have worked really diligently through the budget process this year and have really combed, sort of combed the, the budget to work with departments and, and to present the most affordable budget. However, we've had three, you know, union negotiations, and we have all, all different things, which you can hear through the budget process. One of the items, two of the items, which are the polling pads, which Russ is going to speak to in a little bit. Tasers was not put in if, and if the BRC needs to put tasers back in, it would be $22,000 per year for five years. And although we're still in the budget process, I would say that Russ and I would support $110,000 from tasers right now. If we did that, it would come down to $625,000 that would be left. The rest of the projects, I would like to propose, or at least have a discussion about maybe wading through the budget process and see how we do through the budget process to see if anything is needed or are there concerns. And then, again, with your support, see which projects you would like to kind of whittle this list down and get more solid numbers and, and have that, more discussions. So I leave it to you to ask me as many questions as you'd like, and just have a little discussion, see where we can go forward.
No, thank you, Melissa, for putting this together, because I, I think this had been a request of the Board over the course of many meetings this summer, just to kind of see what we have, where we've been, where we're going, maybe getting a list from. You represented the department heads, you know, obviously 1.6 million doesn't go very far, which is scary. And 736,000 that's remaining is not much. You know, I think the Board has heard me ad nauseam throughout these meetings that I, I really don't think that items that could be or should be line items be used. There were some IT things that were emergent. You know, that department has been held together by gum and Band-Aids for years, thanks to Mr. Swanson. But I think, you know, like the polling pads we talked about, Mr. Dean will talk about that later. We talked about the tasers. Some of the other things on this list, I mean, I really, I understand that where the budget is at this point, the BRC still needs to scrub it and bring it to us.
Yep.
But, you know, items like buying a piece of property that will benefit the town for decades is a reasonable, in my opinion, option for this type of funding. The other thing to keep in mind, you're absolutely right, we don't have to use the funding or commit to the funding until 2024. We saw in the last couple of years, some emergent public works projects that came up incredibly unexpected, that were in dire need of being taken care of immediately. Unfortunately, above and beyond the ARPA funds, we had, you know, a member of Congress and a senator that really came through for the town and, and helped us out. We, we won't always have that. And I think also, we also, we have a public works director who's retiring at the end of the year, and will be in an area of transition, and one can assume that there may be more projects that will come up unexpectedly. So, you know, I'm always about using funding that's available, but I'm also, you know, about using it conservatively and not spending it all in one year. So those are my thoughts. I mean, every single one of these ideas in, in Table 2 are good, you know? Some have been discussed, some have not, some could be fundraised, some could not. But that's just where I'm coming from, and I'll yield, and let's start down this end. Selectwoman Belanger?
Hi. So I'm going to second what Nico said and not repeat it. A few of the things, me personally, to do with the Town Hall. I think we need to look at those things, but I also think we need to look at other funding options, which is something that I would like to see the next time we bring this up. An estimated cost, other funding options, not just ARPA funds. I thought we kind of, as a Board, already talked about the tasers going into the budget line item and seeing what the BRC does with it, so I was surprised to see this on the list. Town Office Second Floor. I think we need to have a more in-depth conversation, because I think it's a very important thing that needs to happen sooner than later. But there's, I, I would like to see more of an update on that and the costs and some ideas. We need to get Melissa to have her own office, and we need, once we hire someone for her, we need her to have the privacy of that person being in a different office.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about that, and I think we would absolutely agree with that assessment.
Yeah. I mean, it's an HR thing. There's, there's, it, it's, it's hard to do. I have full faith in Melissa's ability to do the job of both HR and Assistant Town Manager, but there are issues with confidentiality. And I have that problem, quite frankly, with your assistant doing the welfare stuff. And we've got to have a conversation about that, I think, in the near future too, but that's not for, right now. So I would like to see more about that. But anything else? I'm fine with the Planet Playground land purchase being considered, but not necessarily the renovations. I'd like to see what we can do with other funding. And election poll padding, we're going to have that discussion. The intersection improvement project, we need an update on that. And the 10 Hampton Road improvements, I believe there's already some money set aside for that.
There is.
For now. So that's-
Very good point, and I think, Mr. Dean, the voters, when, when they voted overwhelmingly for 10, for 10 Hampton Road, there was $100,000 built in. And just by looking at this list alone, in addition to the other CIP, what's in the CIP book, what's been brought before the BRC a couple of weeks ago, I mean, I really think 10 Hampton Road is, should be at the bottom. I mean, there, there's $100,000 there to work with, that the voters voted on.
Correct.
You know, DPW also has a building maintenance budget. If there was something that was in dire need of repair, that was emergent and unexpected, but I think really, for this type of funding, and, and I know there's also a grant that Parks and Rec is waiting on.
Right.
I really think they, it's got to go to the, the bottom of the list for now. And I'm a, you know, I'm a big Parks and Rec supporter, but I, I don't think that that belongs. I agree with you, Selectwoman Belanger.
And it is actually at the bottom of the list, if you will.
It should be even more down to the bottom.
Yeah, I was surprised to see it there. Right now, I was surprised to see that there.
So there you go.
All right. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, I agree with Selectwoman Belanger about the Town Hall HVAC and Sound and Lighting. And I'm all for, as the Chair has talked about, things that are going to improve our arts and culture and, and the quality of life in town for beyond, you know, the rest of my life, anyway. I, it definitely needs to be coordinated, and a price for the HVAC at $120,000, there's no way it's that small a number. If it took $50,000 to put into bathrooms, it's going to take a lot more to put in an HVAC system. Two, it's got to be done holistically. You know, the, it just can't be two separate projects that are going to happen. If we go through, and I've still had difficulty getting connected with the Preservation Alliance, but if we go through the historical survey with that, that's going to tell us important features that shouldn't be touched, areas that it doesn't matter if they can be touched, areas to enhance what's there that may, may or may not fall into these categories. But when, when we get a historical survey done of the entire building, inside and outside, then we're eligible for, and we get it on the National Register, then we're eligible for federal grants. And this is not a, this is a time-consuming project, you know, regardless of, of if we get funding in 2024, depending on where we are in our, in our status, I, I would put it down at the bottom, and I think that the Energy Committee, the Arts Committee, the Facilities Committee, and the Heritage Commission all, all have to have a meeting with representatives from each of those bodies after we get the historical survey done, or, or while it's being done, with, with the consultant. The Arts Committee did go out and get a, a pricing for just doing the historical survey, and that's at $10,000. So that's money, that's what I'm trying to get the first grant for, is to pay for that part, or at least half of it. So I would put that sort of at the bottom of the list, only because there's coordination and, you know, the economies of scale that we've been talking about. We don't want to put an HVAC and then have it compete with the lighting, or have to take something down and put it back up, you know, for whatever project is. And there's so many different types of HVAC systems that could go in there. I, where the price for $120,000 came, I don't know.
That came from our Maintenance Director.
Yeah. The rekeying cannot, not go into the $100,000 maintenance budget that we have every year in the, in the regular budget.
We can ask him, yep.
And then, what was the other one? Oh, the Town Hall Chairs, we've talked about that for a while, and one of the things was making a revenue- And one of the things was making a revenue source of selling the benches that are there, the foldable benches that are there, which are, you know, on Amazon or Craigslist or what have you.
Yep.
I'm not sure they'd all sell, but we can get some revenue from that.
So the, and I'm not going to say the issue, I will tell you that we will need to make a decision because we can't sell the chairs until we have chairs.
No, absolutely.
So we would almost need to support.
Upfront cost.
Yeah, we need to either support the purchase of the chairs and then we can go sell them and.
You don't have chairs, you have to stand.
Pay it back, but we can't sell them until we get.
No, absolutely.
Till we have some approval for that.
Upfront cost, but we have the revenue come back to offset it.
Right.
I would, I would move the Swayze Parkway turnaround, whatever design we're going to end up with, higher up, because that is, you know, people are foaming at the mouth for whatever solution we're going to have for that.
Yeah.
And if it's something that we can get designed and constructed within that time period, or even earlier, that one would be important to me.
Okay.
The polling pads are, polling pads I want.
I think we'll have a suggestion for you shortly.
I think that's it for right now.
Can I just follow up with that? The Town Hall HVAC system, we had a meeting with Arts, Park and Rec, Maintenance, Town Manager, AME Energy Committee, I can't remember who else, it was a bunch of us, to discuss Town Hall. And it was sort of discussed that the Energy Committee helped with, we did the insulation, and then the next step would sort of be this improvement of the HVAC system. I just want to remind everybody that we do have town staff over there with the heating and cooling system not fantastic. They've done the mini splits and then when we rent out the space, we have a challenging situation. My understanding, and I will confirm this with Jeff, was it was a mini, sort of a larger economies of scale mini split system, I hate to use the word mini split, but that was being suggested for the HVAC update. And he, I believe, felt pretty confidently that it would be able to be sort of retrofitted to the building that wouldn't cause a problem, but I will confirm that with him.
I didn't know that meeting occurred. I didn't know all those people got together.
Yep, was that like three or four months ago?
Yeah, it was, it was a while ago, actually. And it was, it was an initial attempt to sit down with stakeholders around the Town Hall.
But not the Heritage Commission.
I don't think the Heritage Commission was a part of that meeting.
I'm not sure.
But I could be mistaken.
I don't know.
No. Well, they're welcome to join in.
Well, I think they should be.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be probably the ones applying for the Preservation Alliance Grant and the National Register.
Yeah, those things have all been, have occurred since that initial meeting. So that initial meeting was quite a while ago.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we're happy to, we're ready to meet again soon, so we're happy to have them join us.
Yeah, you know, I definitely, this is important, the upgrades to the Town Hall.
I agree.
And I just don't want to see us throw money at it and not have it work out in sequence.
I completely agree. I would, I would be devastated. I think it's a really fantastic asset that the town has. I'd love to see it utilized more. There are some upgrades that need to happen. And it's very, very hard, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, I haven't discussed this with Russ, to get that in the budget because sometimes we have other emergent emergencies. And so ARPA may give us an opportunity to be able to put some love into that building without it going into the budget so that that building can continue to support the community.
Right. And if we have, we have the time to make that commitment, the cost commitment.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we can try to fast forward the coordination aspect as far as the planning of it goes.
Yep, definitely.
May I just add to what, that's why I was asking for other funding options, because the fees for the town rental, for the town buildings had increased quite a bit, and I'm hoping we can use some of those fees to do some of these things.
We're not, we can look at them, the fees, the majority of the fees that were increased substantially were sort of for the presidential campaigns. And we haven't had as many presidential campaigns come in because we did have to readjust the fire capacity for that building.
So let me, sorry, I don't want to get sidetracked with this, but even with that, we're always renting out things, right?
Yep.
We've got festivals that go on, we have things going on at the Town Hall, it seems like all the time. So with that in mind, those fees can't be used for some of this, especially the HVAC.
I think they're $75 and $150.
That's it?
Yeah.
To rent.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying, so the, I am more than happy to get you the balance.
But, no, but the fund itself. Don't we have a fund?
Yes, we actually just adopted a fund for the Town Hall.
Right, okay. So we have no money?
There's $5,000 in it.
That's where I was trying to go, just apparently not direct enough. Thank you for.
So that was in the last warrant. Can we do another warrant article?
To add money to the fund? We could do that, sure.
Yeah, I think it's important. We need to, we need to do these things, but we need to have a little savings account and do what we need to do with it when we can. When we do it.
I think that seems right. We have, you know, we've got the fund for Parks and Rec, which obviously is a larger scale, we have a fund for Swayze Park, perhaps maintaining an annual warrant article and leave it to the voters.
Yeah.
For Town Hall.
Sure. Have to figure out a number, what we think would work, but it's a reasonable idea.
I believe the genesis of that came from the Arts and Culture Commission, so maybe that's something they could recommend, an amount that they feel is productive, yet could pass.
Okay, we can ask them.
Yes, thank you.
Select Woman Raffeyal. Select Woman Cowan.
I appreciate this discussion because I do think that we need some guidance in terms of wrapping our heads around what are the things that we should be doing and, you know, because while, yes, it's money, it's not actually a lot of money. And I agree about the questions, are there other ways to fund these things? And how do we, one, investigate that and, two, apply for funding or do whatever it needs to be done to make that happen? I do think that we have a little bit of time, although I do, as this sort of creeps on and goes forward, it does seem to be that we're not using this appropriately, at least in the public's opinion. I also think, you know, looking at the Town Hall is a really good idea because it is hard to argue how to put those upgrades in the budget. I think that that has immediate use. I do, you know, I think that protecting democracy is important, but I also think that we have other ways of funding those things. So I think that, you know, we've addressed that. And, you know, as much as I, I, you know, think that we should use the Swayze Parkway a little differently, I don't know that I would put that higher than the Town Hall, I guess. So those are my thoughts. It would be good to get a sense of, you know, as I think that there's another meeting coming up, hopefully the Heritage Commission will be invited, and, you know, how do we look at, look at the historical building, decide if there are other ways to advocate for money, decide if we have enough money through the ARPA funds to do the upgrades that we want to do? Is there a way to get matching funds or some, you know, like how can we, how can we leverage our dollars here, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I will take all of it back and chat with various boards, committees, and departments. Oh, sorry, Nico.
One quick, because I, just to follow up with Select Woman Cowan, regarding the HVAC Town Hall.
Yep.
Because you bring up a good point. We do have employees there, we do have people who are permitting it. I don't know how frequently it's been used, but I would be willing to say it's probably going to increase the usage as things start to open up.
Yes.
And, you know, obviously the HVAC is important for both folks coming in for an activity or an event, but also for employees. So, you know, for that one Town Hall initiative, could we get, and I understand that.
Yeah.
Maintenance Director came up with the 120, but if we could get just a more comprehensive idea of what that 120 is actually going to be, whether in fact it might cost more.
Sure.
To have it done, as you said, Select Woman Gilman, done in a way that it's going to be around for a while, not just a quick fix and then we have to redo it.
Right.
Obviously, Town Hall is going to have to be done piecemeal.
Yes.
And there's a lot that needs to be done. There are different areas which we can obtain funding, grants, I mean, that, you know, in the, is, as young as the Arts and Culture Commission is, in terms of how long they've been, actually been a commission, they've done a wonderful job obtaining not only grant money but donations for other things around town. I think they've proven themselves in the fundraising. So we in turn can also look at, how can we help? And I think the HVAC system is one of the first steps, if it's done correctly and in a way that it's going to be sufficient 10, 20 years from now.
Sure. I can bring that back to you guys.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, may I just add with everyone's agreement, obviously, I really do, would like to see some more detail on the idea of the office, additional office space upstairs. I, sooner than later, if you could please.
We just got the final drawings for the proposals and now we.
Oh, good. I didn't know that was in the works, so that's good to know.
So we just got those.
Okay, good.
And so now we would need to work with the Director of Maintenance and see what the cost would be and get some ideas. We can bring that back as well.
Thank you.
Julie, who is the best contact for the Heritage Commission?
I would, the Chair's name is Jay Myers.
Okay.
And I believe his email's on the website, but.
Yeah, it is. I just wanted, just a name, but, okay. Any other questions?
Just, this doesn't have to do with ARPA, but just a suggestion, if these types of meetings take place where you have multiple committees, it may not fall under Select Board Committee Report, but it might be nice if the board is informed of the outcome.
Sure.
Just so we know that these meetings happened.
Sure.
Be great. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Dean, I'm looking at the rest of the agenda. Is Mr. Vlasic here only for the grant?
I believe he is.
Would the board object, taking that up right now so we can let this gentleman go home? Bye, Chris. Hi, Paul.
Hello there. Thank you for that. Paul Vlasic's the Town Engineer. And in your packet, there should be a memo from me to the Town Manager. And it really says the town can be awarded a 45,000 watershed assistance grant, and the Select Board would need to accept that grant and authorize the Town Manager to sign any documents relative to the grant. Now, the things that we're going to do with this grant have really started back when the Great Bay Total Nitrogen Permit came out, where we've got to limit the amount of nitrogen in Great Bay. And with that permit, there was also a component in there of adaptive management, where you take these nutrients and nitrogen from non-point source, which means not just your waste water treatment plant point discharges, and you try to do it through various other land generating functions that generate nitrogen. So with that, there's three components to this. One is to retrofit stormwater designs or retrofit the stormwater system with these nutrient-removing components to it. And it's very similar to the Lincoln Street Subwatershed Grant that we had a few years ago. This will look for other areas in town to do the same thing. The next component is to look at septic systems and more in particularly, advanced septic systems, where you can put this other component onto septic systems and have greater nitrogen removal, and to see if there is a way the town could incentivize something like that. And then lastly, is to aid in education for our Healthy Lawns Program for fertilizer's reduction. So again, it's the Watershed Assistance Grant for $45,000. The total project cost would be $94,260, which includes $2,860 worth of my time into it. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Vlasic? Paul, how does the remainder get, what's the funding mechanism for the remainder?
Well, I do believe you just talked about that with the Town ARPA funds.
Okay.
It was already approved.
Yep, no, I remember. Seeing no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for the town to accept the $45,000 watershed assistance grant and authorize the Town Manager to sign any documents relative to this grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, most passes. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Dean, you're up. It's a continuing conversation on the polling pads, which I don't think there should be much conversation. The board had agreed with the Town Moderator, Town Clerk, and Supervisor of the Checklist that these polling pads are quite essential for our voters moving forward in the elections and will help the efficiency of both our volunteers as well as our voters. And I think the argument was made and unanimously, we agreed that this was something that we wanted to have for the March 23 elections, start off with a less populated election. I'm fortunate that that is. You had suggested using ARPA funds, the board asked you to find some funding in the present '22 budget.
Right.
And it's amazing what can be done, because I think you did it.
Yes. So the polling pads were discussed at the board's meeting of September 19th. The cost to purchase the pads is $19,400. And we did a scrub of the budget and in reviewing the budget, there is an anticipated surplus in the parks' health insurance line due to vacancies. The budget year-to-date is $46,813. Budget versus $13,152 spent. The anticipated surplus in this account will cover the cost of the polling pads. So that's where I would recommend we get the money from.
And can you explain how that's going to reflect in the budget lines?
There'll be a transfer of money from this line to the elections budget, so it will, it will be clean, if you will.
So you're suggesting the $19,400 taken from the parks' line item and moved to the Town Clerk's election line item?
Correct.
Any comments or questions from the board?
The only, I don't have the budget in front of me. There's, is there any line available, a whole placeholder that we can put it on? Well, I guess it won't matter. I just, yes, it's going to look like one is not spent because it's not being spent on what it was allocated for, but election is going to go up, be overbudgeted. Do you see what I'm saying? But I'm sure we can all remember the reasoning.
Yeah, I mean, the other, if we just spend the money out of elections, we know we have the surplus in parks and one will offset the other.
Yeah, it would just have to be noted in the notes.
Right.
In the remarks part, it's just really important to put that in there.
Yeah.
So when the budget process happens, over the next three years, they look at five years out. So I just want to make sure that we're continually putting that in there until that year's gone off the chart.
We want, we want to make it transparent, so.
Absolutely. And it's for the budget process, we have new people on BRC all the time, you know, and it's good, but we don't. time, you know, and it's good, but we don't always remember year-to-year, so it's always a good idea. I'm completely excited that you found this money, so no obstacles for me.
Moving forward, will there be a budget line under Elections? Because I believe the Town Clerk said there's going to be a recurring cost.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Dean or comments?
No.
So, crafting this motion, I want to make sure I have it right. You're looking for a motion to reallocate $19,400 from the Park's health insurance line to be placed in the Elections Budget Line to reflect the entire cost of the purchase of the polling pads. Is that correct?
Yes.
So moved.
I believe that was a motion, Joanna, when you're watching this, we have a-
And I will second-
A motion and a second by Selectwoman Belander.
Can we add about the Town Manager signing, or we don't need to?
Do you need to, and authorize the Town Manager to sign any appropriate contracts?
That's fine.
Okay.
I amend my motion.
The motion is amended by Selectwoman Gilman.
I will second the amended motion.
Selectwoman Belander seconds the amended motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Mr. Dean and Ms. Roy, thank you very much.
And also thank you to-
For saving $19,000 of our ARPA funds.
Also thank you to our Moderator.
Yes.
And our Town Clerk, and our checklist supervisor of the checklist. They came here three times to talk to us about this, and-
I'm excited to see this work.
I absolutely am, too.
Okay, Mr. Dean, it's that time of year for the Riverwoods Tax Agreement Discussion. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Sure. The, this agreement is an annual agreement that Riverwoods and the town enter into regarding taxation of, of the campus at Riverwoods. And it's pretty straightforward, and there haven't been any changes to the agreement. It does say by December 1st, 2022, Riverwoods will pay to the town real estate taxes for land and buildings owned by Riverwoods and located at the three campuses known as the Woods, the Ridge, and the Boulders. So, that's fully taxable. The real estate taxes will be calculated by multiplying the tax rate times the assessed value of the land and buildings owned by Riverwoods as follows. The residential units will pay the full tax rate, state, municipal, and county, and school. The buildings for healthcare residents will not pay any tax, which is typical of that, those buildings, state, municipal, county, or school. The remainder of land and buildings, including the land used for the final calculation of density under the land use ordinance of the Town of Exeter and Outbuildings, will pay the full tax rate. And the land not needed for final, for the final calculation of density under the land use ordinance of the town, which is in current use, will pay taxes at the full state, municipal, county, and school rate for current-use property.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Dean?
No, it's nice to have it as just one motion instead of, we used to have to do each one separately.
Would you like to make it?
Let's see if I can craft it. I move to approve the pilot payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the Riverwoods Company at Exeter for their, for the Woods, the Ridge, and the Boulders. And as of October 11th, 2022.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second?
Is that enough?
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman. Thank you, Mr. Dean. And our last discussion item, I believe Assistant Town Manager Roy has a Swayze Park update for all of us. Welcome back, Melissa.
Thank you. So, as we know, last year on the town warrant, the residents voted to support moving forward with the conversation to close Swayze Parkway, pass the Pavilion up to New Fields Road, with two exception, or two conditions, the first being that we get approval from the New Hampshire, New Hampshire Charitable Trust, and the second that we bring that to probate court and, and get approval there. We have been working with the Town's Council, Mitchell Group, and we had previously been working with the Director of the New Hampshire Charitable Trust, which was Tom Donovan, who recently, I don't want to say suddenly, but I guess maybe suddenly to us, retired. He had been working back and forth with our Council, and now there is a new person, Diane Quinlan, who our legal counsel has been in touch with, and is, he is sending, he sent a letter today, or sending a letter today, to get her final decision on whether or not she feels that the proposal that was put on the warrant does in fact stand muster for, for what we're looking to do. In talking with Walter last week, who is our counsel, we do expect, and we hope, I'll say fingers crossed, an answer in the next week or two, preferably, hopefully by the end of the week. And then the next step after that, if they support the closing of the Parkway from the Pavilion to the north, would be to file our petition with the probate court. So, that is the very quick update, and we're happy to answer any questions. But I know that we haven't really been able to give a lot of information, but there has been a lot of behind-the-scenes work with Council and Charitable Trust. We haven't been sitting on it, but it, it just moved a little slower than we would prefer.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for the update.
Sure.
Appreciate the update. If we could get this, and Mr. Dean, we'll talk, but when we get an answer, if you could let me know, I'd want to put it on the agenda for the next possible meeting, just so-
Yes.
Sure.
Folks can get an update.
Absolutely.
Because I think when, when Melissa talks about behind-the-scenes, it's, it's more of a, the attorneys doing what they do. It's not a non-transparent-
Oh, no, no, no.
-activity, so to speak.
Thank you.
But obviously, now that the, this seems to be moving forward, if we can keep the public aware of where we're at, that would be appreciated.
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to regular business, we have Veterans Credit and two, three solar exemptions. So, Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 80, Lot 17, Unit 111, or Unit 11, in the amount of $25,000 for the tax year 2023. Second?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0.
I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 85, Lot 46, in the amount of $12,000 for tax year 2023.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0.
I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 71, Lot 82, in the amount of $16,000 for the tax year 2023.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0.
And I move to approve a Veterans Credit for MAP 71, Lot 82, in the amount of $500 for tax year 2023.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And Mr. Dean, we have a, looks like a Highway Safety Grant to approve?
Right. This is a retroactive approval of a grant that already went through the system. We were notified about two weeks ago that the, the Office of Highway Safety wanted the Select Board to approve the grant. So, we're just looking for a motion to do that, and we'll go back to them with that.
Very well. I have this written down. The amount of the grant is-
$10,000.
$1,560.22.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board? I would entertain a motion then to authorize acceptance of the Office of Highway Safety Grant Agreement in the amount of $10,560.22.
Sec, oh, second. I'm seconding, and I haven't even made the motion. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 5-0. I'll thank Chief Pullen for that. Mr. Dean?
Okay. We got some good news on health insurance. If you have not heard, we actually, in our budget, we received a decrease in health insurance, and we had budgeted seven and a half percent increase. So, that 1.5% decrease means an amount in a reduction to the general fund of $237,221. So, that's really a nice change from where we were to where we are. So, that's great news, and just wanted to report that out to the Board. We do have a 2% increase in dental, but whereas our dental insurance is a fairly small number, it's not, you know, that's not a big amount. So, that's where dental came out, and that's where health came out. So, good, a good year. Water sewer rate study, it is underway. I am working with Bob Kelly and Corey Stevens on that. I just wanted to let the Board know, because that was something that had been brought up before. Bob's idea was to go to Corey and get some of the initial data, saving us some consulting dollars. And so, that's where we're at with that, and we're continuing to work on that. I had an interview with New Hampshire Magazine today, which was a really good interview about Exeter, and I know that they reached out to the Chair of the Board as well on that. It's going to be a profile piece, I believe, in the next issue, so you can look forward to seeing that in the, in the coming, coming issue of New Hampshire Magazine. A report on our audit, we did get an unqualified opinion on our audit, again, which is the highest opinion that you can get, so that's great news. We had a closing conference with Ed Boyd from Lansing last week with Corey Stevens and Laura Zagopoulos, and just happy to report that everything went smoothly with the audit, as it normally does, so.
Was this Corey's first audit?
Corey's first audit, yes.
Congratulations to Corey and Laura.
Yeah. Yeah, did a great job, and the hats off to the entire finance crew.
Absolutely.
Gail, Gail Moran, Laura Zagopoulos, and Corey as well.
Gail, sorry, Gail, I couldn't, wasn't remembering your name in the moment, but yes, congratulations to all.
Everybody did a tremendous job.
Yes.
So, I did have a Health Trust meeting on October 4th, and then finally, I just wanted to report on a meeting that I had with the Fire Department with Coastal Waters. Doug Eastman, our Code Enforcement Officer, and the Fire Department is also involved in that. There's been some concern about the tents that they've put up with, with their students, and we're doing what we can. It's, we don't really have a lot of options right now, but we're being told that they're going to move ahead with plans to renovate the building, but that hasn't happened yet. So, we'll be following up with the Board and letting you know what's, what's happening with that. And I think that was it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome.
Select Board Committee Reports. I just want to make an observation and then maybe a suggestion. We have committees that meet regular times each month, and while the agendas need to be posted 24 business hours before the meetings, and this would include the Select Board meetings, can we fill up the calendar over a 12-month period? In other words, I know we have to make exceptions in the Select Board sometimes, based on our business, people's schedules, but for instance, the Sustainability Committee meets the first Tuesday. The Planning Board is every second and fourth Tuesday. Zoning Board, Concom, Arts and Culture, et cetera, et cetera. If we know that, it might be easier for committee members, town staff, obviously, your office, because then your office is only doing it once, and post the meetings for the, for the entire 12 months, when they're regularly scheduled. And then if they have to be canceled, they can call into your office and cancel. Now, obviously, the agendas have to be posted within 24 hours, and we need to remind the Chairs, I think it would be a good reminder to the Chairs to, that they need to get the agenda into your office within 24 business hours, that excludes weekends and holidays. But I see no reason why the committee meetings just can't be posted for over the 12 months. Does that make sense?
Yeah. If they're on a regular schedule, we could do that.
And I think they all are.
We used to do that, and I don't know why we stopped, but I'll tell you, trying to reschedule, it makes it really difficult. Now, that means we've either got to go to all the other committees to see when they meet, unless we have it all memorialized, you know, in our brains, which, sorry, I can't do that. But, yeah, I, I would thank you for, for bringing that up. I, I think it's really good, for communication reasons, too. Anyone can go on the Town Website and, and see, you know, you know, we can put our Planning Board, and you can literally limit it to just the Planning Board, and it will show all the meetings and things like that.
Most, you know, most Chairs know to, you know, I know, I'm the rep to the Sustainability Committee, and Chetna will get that in a week or so, maybe four days, five days before the meeting. But I think it, we're all human, and things come up, you forget, but I think if the actual meetings are already posted, that alleviates a lot of stress on your office and also the Chairs, and then just reminding the Chairs that they still need to get the agendas into your office within 24 hours. I just think that might be a more efficient way of posting these.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know with the Housing Advisory Committee, when, we always used to go over our next year's meeting dates in December, and that way, if there was a holiday or something, we rescheduled it right then and there and, and knew what the next year looked like for our meeting. So, sorry, Andy, I wasn't looking at the mic. But, yeah, I think it would be a good, good thing to do.
So, if we could consider that, okay.
So noted.
Thank you.
So, Selectwoman Rantrell, if I'll start down this end?
So, I guess, not worth giving an update about the meeting that wasn't a meeting. So, other than that, no, I haven't had any meetings.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Selectwoman Gilman?
I also have no, had had no meetings. I do have a Heritage Commission and a Energy Committee and a Historic District Commission meeting coming up, well, the Energy Committees tomorrow. The HDC and the Heritage are next week, but I don't have an agenda for them yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Selectwoman Belander?
I went to a Master Plan Subcommittee Meeting, and we talked about the zoning project that our Town Planner is working on. And then the Housing Advisory Committee meeting for this Friday, the 14th, has been canceled due to some conflicts of scheduling, and the November 11th meeting is moved to November 4th because of Veterans Day. And that's it for me.
Thank you. I had a Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting last Tuesday, and a couple of things that the Board will be looking for or at in the coming weeks, perhaps. They are finalizing a single-use plastic proposed ordinance, and I think they're going to finalize it at their November 1st meeting, and request, if every, if there are no other issues, request that the Board start to take that up at our next meeting for three, bless you, for three public hearings, as it is an ordinance, bless you. Single-use plastics. Number two, they are working on revising and redrafting their charge and defining sustainability, redefining sustainability. I reminded them that any change would have to come before the Select Board. This is in its infancy. I did ask that they look at the Energy Committee's charge and mission statement, because I think that's really well done, and I know that Committee's done a lot of productive work. They have split into some subcommittees, which is nice to see, one of which was, was responding to vendors and town staff who had concerns about the single-use plastic ordinance, which by the way, would only be for town buildings and town property. That's, falls within the jurisdiction of the, the Board, and ultimately the public hearings. I mean, it's not for restaurants and private business, et cetera. And then the other Subcommittee is looking at coming up with three to four sustainability, sustainable initiatives for the town in the next coming years. So, Kristin, Kristin has them quite active. Some more to come on that. Russ, you, you reminded me of something when you mentioned Doug's name. Whether it be a political sign or any other type of sign. Quick public service announcement that Doug Eastman is our code enforcement officer. And if there's somebody that feels that a sign is on public property or on property that it should not be on, it is up to the code enforcement officer to remove the sign, not a private citizen. Just a reminder. Okay, correspondence, we had one piece of correspondence from the executive council that the executive counselor has secured over fifteen million dollars in state emergency fuel assistance. And there's a memo to that effect in the packet. I don't know, Selectwoman Gilman?
Yeah, I talked about this at our last meeting where we raised the, the house raised the limit for low to median, median income individuals to be able to take advantage of this energy assistance program because of the spike in rates. And so this is just telling you a little bit more about how much money came and what, and the phone number contacts to, to apply for it, so.
Thank you. And last piece of correspondence is not in our packet, but I received several emails from the same author who interviewed Mr. Dean today for New Hampshire Magazine. She reached out to me several times last week and we spoke for about a half hour yesterday. I know she also reached out to our economic developer and she's reaching out to other people in town. They try to do a profile on a New Hampshire town periodically and she, she picked Exeter, happily so. And we had a really nice conversation. I'm excited to read her article, but it's basically showcasing the successes in Exeter, particularly the economic development, our businesses, our master plan, some of our challenges as a municipality, as a community. But it's going to be very exciting to read this article when it comes out. And it's nice, free advertising for the town, so.
There was some history too, Julie.
That's good.
Just so you know, we got some history in there.
Dare I ask who?
She actually
She talked to Barbara Remcunis.
She'd done her homework too. I mean, she, you know, there were some things that, but it's, it'll be interesting, but it's always nice to get
Make sure you send us an email when it comes out.
Okay, reviewing the board calendar, I wanted to get this through over the year out of respect for everybody's schedules with various holidays and such coming up. We have in the near future Halloween and we also have an election coming up. So I'm going to ask the board to consider the following schedule. We are scheduled to meet on October 24th, October 24th, excuse me. Our next date to meet would be November 7th, however, that's the night before an election. The preceding Monday is Halloween, so I'm proposing to the board that we skip two weeks and meet November 14th to be followed up by November 21st. And that would put us back on our regular schedule to meet December 5th and also December 19th.
All right, say that again.
So these are the dates, 10/24.
10/24, let me go back.
Yes.
That was already scheduled.
Already scheduled.
Yeah, 11/14, 11/21, 12/5 and 12/19.
So not 11/28?
No.
11, sorry.
14 and 21?
And then December.
And I
And then December 5th? And the 19th. Presumably, Mr. Dean, Chair Kelly can have the budget recommendations on December 5th. And that would give the board three select board meetings, I would think, before our budget hearing.
Yes.
At least two, hopefully three.
Yes.
Okay. Everyone fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Dean too, let's remind folks, there'll be a week between the 25th of December and December 31st where the board does need to come in briefly to
Approve encumbrances.
Finalize and approve encumbrances. And you can get us that date
Yes.
Soon, so we can plan.
Yes.
At least to have a quorum. Anything else before we adjourn? Great. Productive meeting, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meetings adjourned, thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.